Everybody can still hear us, right? Let me say something. Alright, so we're gonna call roll right quick. Did you punch the button? Mayor Pro Tem Villa Logo. Councilmember Barker.
Here.
Councilmember Shell Allen.
Here.
And Mayor Devaney, we do have a quorum. Uh, let's stand and say pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic, the liberty, and the justice of our citizens. Under oath, under law, and as it is called, with the procedure of this. Alright, thank y'all. Now, when it comes to public, because this is a regular meeting, we need to allow for public comments. We did not have any by noon today, as I understand it. Correct? And we have one visitor inside, and he has not filled out a request for public comment. Alright, so there are no public comments. We have, the next item on the agenda is consent items. Uh, if you... When did these go out? This went out Thursday, I think. Uh, the big important one is the September eighth meeting that has, I need to be able to sign that and send that to our grant administrators for this grant, saying that we, uh, passed, uh, a just, uh, addendum to the purchasing policy and to the, uh, and pass the communications plan, citizens' communications plan. So that's why it's important that Shelby has worked hard to get that done. Uh, hopefully everybody had a chance to read these. Anybody got a suggestion? A motion to accept the consent items?
I make a motion that we accept, uh, consent items.
Uh, who made the motion? Jan, that was you?
Jan, that was Jan.
Alright, and Sonya seconded. And that leaves Lisa, yay or no?
Yeah.
I didn't hear that?
Yes.
Passes three of them. Thank y'all very much. Uh, the next item on the agenda is our discussion about the, uh, grant. Uh, this is the authorization of the grant that we talked about last week. Uh, so last week when we met, I thought, well, you're gonna have maybe a copy of it. It turns out, we don't have a copy of the application, but that's okay. The process that I've learned is that we need to go through and approve a resolution, which, uh, the Laker folks gave us. Uh, we filled in the blanks to make it specific to us, and it's a path, but we're not gonna get to that one yet. The next thing we're gonna do is we're gonna give Mr. Turk, or slash, Mr. Freeland here, who is with us, uh, uh, an opportunity to be questioned on some of, uh, on what we're trying to go do with this grant. And so, Mr. Freeland, I'm gonna hold you in reserve, if you don't mind, and when I call on you, you'll have to unmute your thing and be able to answer questions if they've got him. At three o'clock this afternoon, or approximately three o'clock this afternoon, he finally got something we can go review, and I sent that out to the council members, and I don't know whether you guys got it or not. Uh, at that... But, uh, with that, we're going to go over that stuff right now. First, I'd like to talk about, to share with you, is the one that is called project summary. And it's kinda gonna lead us through this, uh, as we go, Jared, that's it. It's on your screen now. And if you haven't had a chance to read it, I feel it's kinda silly reading this stuff to you, so I'm gonna kinda paraphrase it, and then at the end of each one of these sections, I'm gonna go around and ask the council members if they have any questions, uh, so that you can, you know, get your questions answered and/or comments or whatever. Um, as part of this, there are several other documents that we were gonna get. We won't talk about the beneficiary ID until at the end. It kind of pulls this all together. Um, we will go over the cost summary. Uh, what we sent you has all the detailed backup about that. These are just estimates, of course, at the current time, but there, you can see the details that go into them. And then we also have a file that has the actual diagram of what we're trying to go off and go do. So is everybody clear on how we'll go through this? We try to make sure y'all understand? And, uh, Jan, you can nod, and Lisa, you can say yes?
Yes.
Or no, whatever. And Sonya, you're happy with what we've just said? Okay. The first thing is, the first paragraph in his project summary is the site description. And it's just this word description of what you saw in the maps that were gone over last week, and what's in the current, uh, engineering drawing that we've got. It starts, we're gonna start the project at the intersection of Lockark Street and Northwest River Road. Uh, and it will follow the Northwest River Road all the way down to the intersection of Quail Run and Northwest River Road. The intent of the activity is to reduce the flooding that occurs right there by, on Northwest River Road, behind the old schoolhouse. The flooding of the road that occurs at the corner, uh, past the shoe tree as you're heading back north. And the potential flooding and catastrophic damage that could happen if the culvert at Quail Run, uh, failed, uh, and that run washed out. So that's kinda what's in that site description to start with, and talks about what, uh, where we're gonna be working with that. So with that, Sonya, I'll start with you. You got any questions about where we're at on that? Uh, Jan, you got any questions?
No, I'm fine.
And Lisa, you good?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Now, the improvement that it's talking about is, the next section is utility improvements. We're gonna be doing a little work to go improve the water lines that are under a portion of Northwest River Road, and those, I think, Mr. Freeland, go from, uh, the Lockark Street intersection down to the, what we refer to as the shoe tree, that first Big Ben. Is that not true? Mr. Freeland?
The, yes, yes, so the water line improvements, uh, we're estimating about forty-six hundred and fifty foot of water line improvements, which would run the extent of the project from Quail Run to Lockark.
Well, okay, so that may be one of the things that we need to go adjust before we actually turn this thing in, because the water department, uh, when they met with us, that, the, the old pipe that he's concerned with replacing was just to about where we were at the shoe tree, where the, uh, open, we're coming out of cornfield end, uh, somewhere in there. Uh, they know the exact location of that. Uh, so the length of that pipe is probably a lot shorter than what you've got in there.
O- okay.
Which is good news. Alright. Uh, the next piece of this is the sewer system improvement. But you gotta understand why we have to change the sewer system in that area. You have to understand what we're fixing to go do, which is put up some very large box culverts underneath Northwest River Road. And so there's, there's one sewer line that runs down the east side, non-riverside Northwest River Road today. It feeds both houses on both sides of the road. When they put this big box culvert in there, they can't get to the other side. So we're gonna have to run a parallel line, sewer line, down the riverside of Northwest River Road once we dig this all up. And that's what that sewer system improves most of that with. We're also gonna make sure that we get all the manholes to the proper level so that there's not any under, under the road where you can't get at it. There's manholes within the town that have been cut by asphalt. And we're gonna make sure we fix that along this section that we're working on. So, anybody got any questions about that? I did say that right, Mr. Freeland, didn't I?
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, Jan, you got any questions about that, the sewer line issue or the water?
Is there a way you can kinda point where that sewer line?
Uh, yeah, maybe.
Is, is that the one where we have, has asbestos in it? Are they closer to Quail Run?
No. No, this is all down along, uh, between the shoe tree and the school.
Oh, okay, that's right. Alright.
Yeah, once we pass the shoe tree and keep all going...
Gotcha, gotcha, I'm in the wrong direction. Yeah, go ahead.
Somebody put a yellow mark on there, and that's, that's the correct thing there. Jared, did you do that?
Yes.
Okay, alright, that's, okay?
Okay.
So that, you, Jan, how about you? Lisa, you got any questions about this so far?
Yes, sir.
Alright. The next piece of this, in the utility improvement, is the communication system. Uh, this has got the engineering guys all twisted up and knots, because if we mess this up, it costs lots of money. So they're trying to do everything on the riverside. All our new installations are planned for the riverside of Northwest River Road. Uh, to stay away from the communication systems, which are buried on the non-riverside of Northwest River Road. You know, I think I said that right, didn't I, Mr. Freeland?
Yes, sir, correct.
And that's, that's, uh, that's the underground communication systems. The overhead communication systems, basically, they have figured out how to pretty much stay away from all of that, which is good news, that keeps us out of having to make any changes there. There may be a little bit of that. So, um, with that, that is the utility improvements that we've been talking about. And I'm gonna give the council one more round of, if you've got questions, talk to us. Sonya, you go first. You got anything? She's happy. Jan, you happy? Jan? Uh, do you free?
Yes, I do, but I'm good.
There it is. And then Lisa, you got any questions?
No, sir.
Okay. Alright, that takes us to page two of the project summary, which is now, we're talking about flood control and drainage improvement. Um, there is a culvert under Northwest River Road, or a couple of them, that are undersized. Uh, the first one is at Northwest River Road and Lockark Street. It actually runs under Lockark Street from Three Rivers Baptist Church over to the old schoolhouse. Uh, on the schoolhouse side, it's about half under, filled up with dirt, I think, uh, right now. So they're gonna go in there as part of this project, and we're gonna replace that. We'll cut the road, that will be actually the beginning portion of the roadwork, is what it'll be located, and replace that. The other culvert that's gonna be replaced is one at the Quail Run Northwest River Road intersection. And we'll get to that when we get down to the bottom of this section. The other thing they're gonna do is, the big thing is, they're gonna put a big seven-foot by seven-foot box culvert underneath that road. Something I can even walk through. So that means we're gonna have to dig a, dig a dig a big ditch from the shoe tree all the way down to the schoolhouse, effectively. And we're gonna take this water that runs over the land, and then over the houses behind the backyards of the Plains Drive people, and it's gonna now run underground down to the, approximately, the Creighton School Cemetery location where that dip is right now. Uh, and hopefully, if we've done it all right, we fix all the, we can't, all that water that comes out of the field uh, into those neighborhoods and down that street right now, and hit it underground safely to the river. Mr. Freeland, I think I have the gist of all of that, isn't it?
That's cor- correct. Just one, uh, one correction. It'll be a dual barrel, seven-by-seven by culvert, so not just a single barrel, but two barrels running down that road. It's a big system.
Very good, big sir, big sir.
And, and if I may, Mayor, just for clarification, will this be on the, on the riverside of Northwest River Road, or on the opposite side? I'm hearing the opposite, I'm just confirming.
Nope, it's on the riverside where we'll be digging. It'll be underneath the current road, and there will be need to impact the people who live along that, the riverside of Northwest River Road, between the, uh, shoe tree and the old schoolhouse. Uh, there is some plans to go off and get some road easements right of ways, uh, in there, because of the width of this.
Very good. And Jared, if you're still there, and you can draw that line again, just for your understanding, and for everybody else to understand? And we might, we might need to ask, uh, Mr. Turk to go ahead and label the shoe tree on the map?
Wouldn't be a bad idea, because that's easy to explain to people, they all know what this is.
We all understand it, so it should be identified on the map.
We need him to talk about it, but now we're trying to ask questions?
Yeah, just say it. Yeah. Okay. Uh, anything else, Lisa?
No, sir, not at this time.
Okay, Sonya, you got a question?
Yeah, so I heard, like, this time, and then I heard last time, about the cemetery.
Yes.
So, there's bodies there?
Uh, not where we're gonna be going.
But, like, um, where you're gonna be going, I mean, like, is it, it's still in the cemetery, but it's not where any of the gravesites are?
Correct. Correct. Last week, uh, I was jogging. Jared, uh, can you point at the little area that's by Creighton School Cemetery, right there, right where he's got, there you go, good job? Last week, if you recall, we were gonna go through, the preliminary, what it was, that we were gonna go through the Creighton School Land and the old Markville Cemetery land. Um, and they had another week to analyze this. They came up with a way to just go through the Creighton School land that's owned by those folks, that. Just because you got a land, you got a house, and one, you know, on a lot, but sort of land around it, that's, that's the same deal. There is bodies, um, buried. Back in here, excuse me, back in here, the close to the river area, if you've ever walked down there?
Yeah.
But there's a big ravine that's there today, and we're gonna use it to clean. There's no bodies in the ravine, and that's what we're gonna be doing. We're trying to go keep, uh, the same flow as... It'll give you a good shot. Um, so, we're gonna stay in the Creighton, the current plan is, we're gonna stay in the Creighton School land footprint, but we're not getting close to the bodies, to the burial site. And that is a good concern, we had a discussion about that today, that is, uh, Mr. Freeland will be free to tell us that civic, civil engineers are told to stay away from cemeteries, but we have no choice right now, uh, except to go, go, go follow that path to the current order.
Just 'cause, I mean, you know, I know the cemetery is old, there may be some unmarked graves, or grave stones that have washed off, there's some that are broken, there may be some that are unmarked, and, you know, that was my only concern.
It's a good valid concern, though, we believe that we'll, it will stay plenty far away. Okay. Any other questions?
Rob, this is, this is Jared. Question for, uh, engineers, are there any concerns about erosion within that, uh, ditch area behind the cemetery?
Uh, I don't want to take far, Mr. Freeland, you can answer that.
Sure, yes. Um, no, so, so what we're, what we're doing, um, is basically channelizing and conveying the same amount of stormwater, uh, that would normally be going to that natural ravine area. Um, we're just collecting it and getting it there in a, in a better, safer, uh, way for the surrounding residences, and the intent is that the outfall structure, um, where the water exits the culvert system, uh, we will implement some erosion protection, uh, features, some baffle blocks, some gabion baskets, uh, and things of that nature, directly downstream, uh, where the outlet of the storm sewer system is, uh, in, in, uh, to, to get that flow back to natural conditions as quickly as possible so that the, the water can continue down to the river, uh, the way it does, uh, currently in today's situation. So the, the erosion, um, impact should be, should be no greater than it is today.
Alright, and, uh, Jan, have you got anything you wanna question on this piece?
No, no, sir, I'm, I'm good.
Okay. The next chunk of this is, there's an interceptor channel, which is not below ground, it is above ground. It is out in that cornfield, or what was the cornfield that's past here, I don't know. Uh, can you go back to the map? Okay, keep going down, Jared. There you go. It is at where the shoe tree intersects Northwest River Road, it is that chunk up there that he's pointing at. And that is gonna be a fifty-foot wide, uh, excuse me, I think that's fifty foot, yeah. Yeah. Fifty-foot wide with a ten-foot flat bottom to it. Kinda similar to the, to the one that's closer to Highway eighty. Drive down Highway eighty, and look kinda where this one would be across that field, you'll see that there's already a drainage ditch that, that comes under the culvert at Highway eighty, and then feeds out there, and we're gonna extend that to go drive all that water into endless to our big underground culvert system.
And, and just as far, we're, we're on that particular part, is that, is that, is that Quail Run? Am I looking at the right place?
No. That is, that is that cornfield that runs behind Plains, uh, Drive, uh, where, where that blue strip he just put on the screen is, is the shoe tree.
I see, I see. So we have no existing infrastructure at that place currently, correct?
Correctly. Right now, we haven't got, like, uh...
Alright, so that's gonna go all the way through there, to eighty? Okay.
Alright, so Lisa, Jan, you got any questions about that?
Uh, no, not at this time.
And Sonya, you good? Alright, now Jared, if you would go draw, uh, between the end of, you're on the right picture, same spot, the little hook looker thing at the bottom, take the blue, blue off that you got, and highlight that feature out, there you go, free. Now, that chunk is not a big seven-by-seven, but that is a, help me, Mr. Freeland, how big is that?
We're, we're evaluating that mass to be a forty-eight inch, uh, round storm sewer pipe.
So, so between the, the, right there at that lower, the lower portion of the picture, uh, in blue is the curve that I prefer to the Indy five hundred curve, where it's got a big bank on it, and every time we have a rain, it fills up the bucket full of water, and people have to all drive on the same side of the road to, to make it around that curve. We're gonna put in a round culvert that, that collects that water and takes it back down to the shoe tree, and back into our big box culvert system at that level. Any questions about that? That should make Mr. McLeod and the Glazers really happy.
You know, it talks about the, um, about, it looks like rebooting the electrical, so there's gonna be some outage there? I mean, during some of this construction?
Uh...
You know, what I'm talking about, and what is, how does it, it says booting and or short-term de-energizing.
Yeah. The, uh, Mr. Freeland, why don't you speak to how, how we go about minimizing outages?
Sure. Well, and so, we're, we're just, we're just putting that out there to, um, take a look at that. Where, where the electrical line runs around those curves, it gets, uh, over the top of the roadway. Uh, you know, it doesn't stay adjacent to the property line. And, uh, when we install these storm sewer systems, um, a lot of times, uh, they will use cranes or large excavators to, to lift these concrete structures and place them and place the pipe. Uh, and in doing so, we have to be aware of any overhead electric, uh, and take precautions to uh, make sure we're, we're compliant with the, the offset distances, um, with any kind of cranes or, or equipment that, that may be moving that equipment under those lines. So, uh, it, what we do for that is, um, you know, we, we may boot the lines, uh, basically put a, put a, a padding over the line, and in some circumstances, if we can't maintain minimum safe distances, um, at the moment where they're doing the work directly at that portion, they may be energized the line temporarily. In the event something were to happen, there wouldn't be an electrocution risk in case the line were to be hit if we're working that close to it. Um, so, so those outages, you know, they wouldn't be long-term, they'd be short-term, and, and, uh, you know, would provide, uh, any of the, the users enough of notice, uh, for those times.
The fine short term, we're talking about minutes, hours, days?
Uh, it, it wouldn't be anything that would exceed a workday. I think, uh, you know, we're probably looking at three-to-four hour outages if, if we have to go that, uh, if we have, if we have to do that.
Okay.
Then, then do what you need?
Yeah.
That was a good question. Okay, um, and that brings us to down to Northwest River Road and Quail Run Road. Uh, at which point in time, what we're gonna do down there, you can go, there you go. So, uh, I don't know how many of you, the council members have studied that, that intersection, but it is, it is being much heavier, more heavily used now, for some reason, than, than it has been in the past, I believe, by larger vehicles. These big trucks that seem to like to use it and skull bridge are, um, they have a hard time making that ninety-degree, or actually, it's bigger than ninety-degree turn. Um, so we, the plan is, is, and they're damaging the culvert that's there. The culvert is currently, I don't know, two, two feet maybe, maybe a twenty-four inch culvert, if not that big. That carries all the water that comes down beside Quail Run and goes through there, and it is getting squished as these trucks go over it, and eventually, they're gonna end up collapsing that thing. So, this, this portion of the project is to go take that... end up collapsing that thing. So this portion of the project is to go take that out and replace that. And the sizes are again box culverts, but not near as big as the ones down on the other end of the project. And they will take the water from that ditch and over into the little ravine that runs down the river. And then we're also going to extend the size of that intersection so that there is adequate room for those trucks to make it around the corner.
So I have a question and statement, if I may.
Okay.
First of all, a question, and I don't even really need an answer at this point, but it appears that where those railroad ties have been placed on Quail Run on that corner, it appears that someone has gone in and driven some metal stakes to maybe hopefully prevent it from collapsing. So all I want to say is whoever's done that and keeping their eye on it, I appreciate that, because I certainly can see how that would be a very large problem. And the next thing I'd like to say is, for the fact that that is really what I would consider a local cut-through, or a place where it's more accessible for people who live in a smaller area, do we have, and if we do not, then could we have the signs that say "no through" trucks to prevent? And when you say trucks, are you talking about 18-wheelers? Are you talking about UPS trucks?
Yes, all of that.
I mean, you know, those-
There's no restriction.
Yeah, those restrictions and regulations that cities put in place on particular roads are obviously for a myriad of reasons. And I certainly feel like that particular location is susceptible, and that we should protect the asset. You know, I know we spent $65,000 making that road beautiful four years ago. And I don't know what it takes to get one of those "no through" trucks, if that is by resolution, by ordinance.
First off, that doesn't have anything to do with the grant.
I understand, but this is, that's a problem area, so you don't have to-
Let me try to get to Harry to explain, let me explain the question to Harry and see what he-
Great, thank you.
I'm not hearing any audio.
I'm not either. If somebody's talking, I'm not hearing it.
I hear y'all.
No.
It's probably the phone. It's my dropped lost connection.
Maybe I had a text of any.
I'm here, by the way.
I can't.
I leave the showmanship to the elected officials.
Oh yeah, there you go.
Does that mean I can turn off my screen, too?
You're more important than me, you stay on. And when I say I leave it to the elected officials, I gave the people of both of County their blank of County their chance, and I was resoundingly rejected. I say that tongue-in-cheek, that's not a bad, I'm not, I'm not-
You're not sour.
Completely self-deprecating.
Is this kind of like-
The video is fine, it's the audio.
I was going to say, is this kind of like the cats away, the mice can play? I'm teasing, I'm just teasing.
Rob, if you can hear us, you can always try going off using the computer, so the phone.
You know, 100-foot phone cord to connect to a landline on this deal would-
I don't think there's a landline in that room.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, plug it into the other room and drag the phone around the corner into that room.
No.
Yeah.
Be worth the $15.
Okay. Hey, Rob, can you hear us? Do a thumbs up. Yep. So I guess he's not hearing either.
Audio's connecting now.
Hello?
Yeah, hey, we-
Can you hear us?
Yes. We got you.
We can, Jared, say something.
Hello?
If you can hear us, we can't hear you.
I can hear you.
Yeah, y'all are doing good. Can you hear us okay?
If you want to switch to the different part for phone.
So we just, they need to unmute their speakers on that.
And you'll need that.
Right.
All right.
Unmute, is that what you're saying, Jared?
Welcome to Zoom. Enter your meeting ID followed by town.
We can write a note for him.
Cat.
Hello, Becca. It's 261.
He said, "If you hear you, you need to raise the volume on the computer."
I don't know how to do that.
It's a problem, they can't hear us.
Bottom right corner.
There you go.
Yes, there.
Dawn full blast.
Near Dayton time.
Hear us now?
Welcome to Zoom. Enter your meeting ID followed by town. You have not entered any password. Followed by town. Just press town to continue. Please enter the meeting password followed by town. You are in the meeting. There are twelve participants in the meeting. This meeting is recorded.
Okay.
Okay, we are back, I think.
No, hear us now.
Yeah.
I think that'll be the only one that's on.
Okay. What did it work? Three trucks. So, so Harry- Okay, we're still able-
Oh shit.
It's your password.
We still got you.
Okay, so through trucks, if they're delivering construction products, hauling gravel, whatever, they're not considered through vehicles.
Correct, correct.
And we've done this before, or we had this problem before, and it arose when we had that large fire, and we had to shut down Highway 80, and we diverted all traffic down Northwest River Road. I know you remember that, Lisa, where that big field caught on fire between Northwest River Road and 80?
Yes.
And then a lot of folks were complaining about the big trucks that were going through. And now that, if they are, say DPS has a weigh station or something, and they're trying to avoid it, now those are considered through vehicles. The main thing, the ones, the guys that go down Northwest River Road tend to be people delivering stuff, especially with all the development that's going on across the river.
Okay.
Did that make any sense whatsoever? I'm sorry if it didn't.
It does, it does. I understand that. That is definitely, I'm familiar with the construction that's going on that backside, you know, and we're going to be having construction for several years to come.
Yes, ma'am.
In that area, and I don't know, you know, there are other ways around. It is not convenient, but I don't know what we potentially could do to say go around, I don't know.
And believe it or not, I actually checked paperwork on one of the drivers one time, and he was permitted, he was not permitted to go down 621.
Oh.
His permit required him to go down that way. But, yeah, that's exactly what I said.
And who's the permit?
Okay, so we're not going to solve the long-term issue of those trucks coming through town right now. What we do have is, I will share with council that we have done some research, as you can tell, Harry's been looking this stuff up. I personally stopped one truck and crawled up and talked to him about it, and they seemed to think they had a permit to go there. I also, last December, we talked to Texop about the chances of them actually moving that road over so that it is a continuation of Skull Road, got very little support and, excuse me, very low probability of them ever doing that, and almost 100% probability that if they did do something, it would be 20 to 30 years out. So at that point in time, I gave up the attempt to go move it over and said we're going to have to go try to go fix that intersection. And so that's why this is in there, is that that intersection is going to have to be there, from what I've been told and understand, for a number of years, and we need to take this opportunity to try to go off and get it fixed. So. Okay, so that answers that.
Take you on.
I got lost track here about that. Has anybody else got any questions about the Quail Run intersection? Sonya's in here shaking her head. How about you, Jan, have you got any questions?
I'm fine, I'm fine.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, so that brings us down to the section on street improvements. Once, of course, we've dug up one end of it, the other end of it, and all the faces in between, and put all this new stuff under there, we got to put a new cap on top, which is the road. It talks in this section about why it's failing. The bottom line is, is we're planning on putting a 24-foot wide road. Currently, what you drive down is, ranges from probably as low as 16 feet wide to up to maybe 20-foot wide. It was, the plan that they've put in here, Mr. Freeland, you correct me if I'm wrong, but is our, is our dream of two concrete strips down the sides that hold the edges and then asphalt on top. Mr. Freeland, that's what's in the plan, isn't it?
That's correct. Yes, our 24-foot wide road with what we call a header curb on each side.
Okay. So any questions about the kind of road we're putting in? Sonya's stroking her head, no. Jan, you got anything?
No.
And Lisa?
No, sir.
And the replacement right now is in there between Lockhart Street and Northwest River Road intersection, all the way to Quail Run. So that's what we're going to try to go off and go make happen with this grant. Now, the next piece of the pie is, go to, Jared, if you'll go to the cost sheet, that's the Excel file, it's got the money in it. Oops, oops. There should be a summary sheet on there. There you go. I'll see if I can make that even bigger. What you can see from the file, I said, y'all, and I don't want to go through all the details, because they're changing as we go, but there's a summary sheet that is that one that he's looking at. And they went in there by each one of these elements, the drainage piece, the water piece, the sewer speeds, and the street piece, and estimating what it'll cost to go off and go make that happen. These costs that are shown here are the construction costs and the acquisition of the right-of-way costs. It all add up to the bottom line of about five point, whatever that number is, three, 5.4 million. On top of that, we have to pay for the engineering guys, and we have to pay for the grant administration people. And that all runs us up to a total of about 6.7, $6,678.27, $27.20 something cents. We're so accurate. This grant, of course, is a, has a 1% match. So what the city's obligating ourselves to, if we get the grant and sign the contract, is $67,000 of city money to go do what we just spent all our time talking about here. Personally, I think that's a great deal. Now, because the water lines are also part of this, and we're partnering with the water department, I will, we will expect them to pay their match percentage for what we do in the water line 10 up there, the water section. But you can see that's just a little under half a billion dollars. By the time you throw in their share of the engineering and grant application, we're probably talking about 60 grand, and they're going to take up seven out of it. And the timing on this is, probably doesn't start spending money until fiscal 2022, and it stretches for, we're guessing, four years right now after that. Mr. Freeland, I talked to Thomas about that the other day. If you have a different opinion on how long it'll take, feel free to jump in and correct me.
No, yeah, no, if that's what you and Thomas discussed, then I'm in agreement with that.
Okay. So this is not a huge hit to our, to our planning budget, because we get to stretch it over a number of years. It brings a ton of money and improvements into the city for some roads that, and the beauty of this is it does address, when we put our road plan together back in 2810, there was some roads we were going to put these ribbons on, that, I can't remember what Thomas, Mr. Freeland called those, but the sides on, and others we were just going to make out of asphalt that had adequate drainage. But then on that list of roads, we had some called SPC roads, which stood for special roads. This, this project addresses two of those, actually three of those special circumstances. It gets the big money, ticket money items out of the way, and therefore I think it's the right thing to go do. So I'm now going to go around the council one more time asking for opinions on, or comments, or anything you want to do before we get to the resolution. So with that, Sonya, what do you want to say? Anything?
No, I'm good with what was said. And then we went over at last time, and then this time.
Okay, Jan, you got anything you want to mention?
I have a little question here. I was looking at, if you look at the tab underwater, it says fire hydrants, 12 of them. I mean, what are we doing with 12 fire hydrants between Quail Run and, and Lockhart Street? and uh, and Lockhart Street? Is it up in those sides?
Mr. Freeland, that's a question of you. Where'd that number come from?
Yes, sir. So wh- wh- what that is, is that is a fire hydrant approximately every five hundred feet, which is the uh, distance recommended by the International Fire Code for, for fire hydrant accessibility in residential, uh, and/or commercial areas.
Okay, uh.
Just bringing up that-
That, let, 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 let me weigh in on that one right quick. Uh, what we, and I have not talked to Mr. Freeland or Mr. Turk about this specifically, and I don't think, I guess, that, that the Mr. Gallegos from the water department probably, uh, came up with any input on that either. So for Mr. Freeland, for, for your information, uh, of course, this, we became a city in nineteen eighty-two, eighty-three, eighty-three, and uh, the water department became a water department in nineteen fifty-something. They were here a long time before we ever had a city. And this area at the time that they became a water department and put lines in was considered a rural area under the guidelines from the state for fire hydrants or fire suppression stuff, uh, under the rural requirements back then. And they've been grandfathering it ever since. So although when you drive down the street, you see a little red thing that looked like a fire hydrant, it is not a fire hydrant. It is a drainage tap. Uh, and the, the people over at the water department will tell you that. And the fear is that the pumper trucks and the other fi- fire equipment that happens today, if they hook on and try to suck water out of there with their fire equipment, they will collapse a lot of the lines throughout the city. And we don't, we don't want them to go do that. So although you guys were following all the right codes, this is a question that needs to be addressed with Mr. Gallegos and the water department about exactly what they would wanna do with this new line that we're gonna put in from that standpoint. So there's some, I guess the, the, a- as far as Jan's question is concerned, having the money in there to put in new li- new fire hydrants per the code protects us from, from not having enough funds on to get there. But as they go complete the real design on this, the, the fire, the, the water department will weigh in on exactly what they wanna put in there. So does that answer your question, Jan?
Yes, it does. Uh, it seems excessive, but you know, we gotta stay up to code. Uh, and, and the last thing that you had commented on about adding on a couple of little projects that were, that were kinda high dollar, but they came from the, some of the other projects? Is that what you were saying? Cause there was four projects presented.
Last week, yes, yes, yes.
And so I, I, I'm just trying to clarify what I thought you, uh, you know, I understood what you were commenting on.
Uh, this, what my comments earlier, that these were the high-dollar projects are, when we, when we looked at our road improvement plan or replacement plan back in twenty-eighteen, we made a list of all roads within Martin Dale.
Right.
And, and some of those roads are straightforward kinda thing. They, you know, you started wanting to go to the other and it's just, it's just asphalt and connections to the people's houses and the like. There's, there were some areas like the drainage problem at the Shoe Tree, excuse me, in front of Mr. McClab's house, the drainage problem there by the, by the old schoolhouse, uh, Johnson Street, i- um, and it seemed like there was another one. Oh, the intersection at Quail Run was, was considered a, 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 we, we identified all those as specials because we didn't know exactly what, we, none of us had a, enough knowledge to know exactly what we needed to go do to them, but we did know that they weren't just a simple riff up the road, prepare the base and ra- lay down a new road, which was the dollarization that we had uh, looking at for most of the road. We said eventually we would have to get back and do something special to those roads, but we weren't smart enough at the time to know the cost or what we would actually go do. This particular grant, when it came along, because it was addressing flooding, actually helped us go say, okay, this is a way to go address those special sections, which as I just reiterated, are three, these three are, are part of those special sections of those roads. So that's why I say those were the high-dollar ones. They were, they weren't, uh, Mr. Freeland could probably tell us, gave us a number. The, the cost per linear foot of just laying down asphalt is a lot lower than what we're talking about doing here because of the culverts and all the other stuff that they gotta go put in there. So does that answer your question?
Yeah, yes.
She's nodding. Okay, uh, Lisa, have you had something?
Yeah, I just wanted to, to, to state, and I do not know this, but I speculate even though our water lines and the rural designation that the wa- that we, that, that the township, if you will, received in its origin, just like in other situations, sometimes when you undo and redo, that's when your grandfathered-in part ceases. And at that point, you have to begin to follow whatever the current code is. So um, I, I certainly feel like that is something that we need to determine, not prior to uh, making a motion on this, but I feel certain that, that um, the Freeman and Turk's car, uh, firm will, will figure those things out.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright, so are we ready to just look for the, the, the resolution? Uh, I'm all reading, 'cause it's one page and I don't know whether I have to or not, but that sure protects us. So this resolution says, "A resolution of the City Council of the City of Martin Dale, Texas, authorizing the submission of a community development block grant mitigation project application to the general land office and authorizing the mayor to act as the city's executive officer and authorized representative in all matters pertaining to the participation in the community development and revitalization program. Whereas, the city council of the city of Martin Dale desires to develop a thriving, viable community, strengthen infrastructure, provide a suitable living environment and expand economic opportunities principally for persons of low to moderate income and whereas certain conditions exist which represent a threat to the public health and safety and whereas it is necessary and in the best interest of the city of Martin Dale to apply for funding under the community development block grant mitigation program, now therefore be it resolved." Section one, that a community development block grant program application is hereby authorized to be filed with the Texas General Land Office for funding consideration under the community development block grant mitigation program and that the application be for the CDBG dash MIT program through the competition or method of distribution of application program to carry out infrastructure activities and that the grant amount be up to the maximum allowed by the CDBG dash MIT program and may include a minimum one percent match. And that the city council directs and designates the mayor as the chief executive officer and authorized representative to act in all matters in connection with this application and participation in the community development and revitalization grant programs. So that is the resolution I would like to have called for a vote on.
I make a motion that we accept and approve resolution, resolution two zero two zero dash zero nine dash one five as presented.
A second.
Alright. Alright, and Sonya had already indicated, say yes or no, yes. Sonya was, thank you, that's all we needed. So it passes three oh. And we can sign that and get in there. Thank y'all very much. I think that, that is, that is the right answer for the cities for the long haul. Great. That brings us to agenda five B, which is the Texas Municipal League Intergovernmental Risk Pool Board of Trustees. So we are a member of the Texas Municipal League. It has, that's, we get a right to vote. Uh, I I'm pretty sure I sent those out in an email last week. Okay, um, and it has to do with, and so there's four places on the ballot. And I, uh, I don't know. No, y- yes, yes. So if y'all packets or information you have, or you can see it on the screen, I have condensed the selection to, for each place down to who they are. And the way we do this is at the end, uh, we, we, we need to decide amongst our, the council who to vote for. Uh, we will mark the ballot and send it in with a, a signed thing from the city that says this was voted on this day, et cetera. Um, so I'd like to walk through them. I put them in this order because they're numerical, uh, not because they're easiest, but the easiest one is the first one because he's an incumbent and he's unopposed. So has anybody got a problem with voting for Mr. Herrera?
No.
Go ahead. N- no, no. Jan, you're okay with that?
Fine. Not that we have a choice. Can, can we do a write-in?
Um, yes, you can.
No, no, don't go on. I, I, uh, Mr. Herrera's fine.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, each one, you could, we can write them in if we have a name with somebody that would wanna do this. Okay, the next two, uh, the next of this place two, we got two individuals on there. Anybody got an idea how to, how to down select?
Um, I, I looked up both of them, but the, the new guy is, is kind of a tech guy and I think sometimes having a tech person uh, on the committee kind of helps see different perspectives of things. So I would go oh, for Mr. Chris Armocost over Mr. Fulmer.
We got, Sonya, what about you?
Same.
You're alright? Uh, we have two for Mr. Armocost. Lisa, you're alright with that?
Sure, yes sir.
Alright, we got that one there. Now to this place three, now we're down to three people. Let's do, go around again. Sonya, you wanna lead off? You got anyone you care about?
Let me go last.
Alright, Sonya wants to go last. Lisa, I'll let you go first this time.
Um, my vote is for Mr. George Hyde.
Alright, got a reason that could? Do you like, like attorneys?
I do.
Okay. Jan, you gotta, you can?
Well, I, I put a checkmark against, for the incumbent, Mr. Snyder.
Against or for, was it?
For, I mean, when I was going through them, I, I kinda checked who I wanted and it was, uh, for Jeffrey Snyder, the incumbent. And he's a manager, not an attorney.
Mm-hmm.
Same, for me.
You, you're okay with Snyder? Okay, we have two for Snyder and one for Mr. Hyde. Is, Lisa, you can live with that?
Absolutely.
Alright, Mr. Snyder. Going on to number four, who hasn't led off here? Sonya, you're, you're up.
Okay, so I think, um, Kimberly.
She likes Ms. Kimberly Mez- Meizmer.
Fairville, Human Resources, you know, for public libraries, um, has twenty-three years of public service.
Okay, she's got some. Lisa, go ahead.
That, that's exactly who my selection would be.
That was mine.
Alright, Jan.
Yeah, that was mine too. She was, uh, Director of General Operations for the city, so I thought she was pretty well qualified.
Alright, so we need a motion now that says that these four people are, uh, so we need, somebody make a motion that says, and read off the place and the names as part of your motion.
I make a motion that, um, the city of Martin Dale approves the votes for place one, Robert Herrera, place two, Chris Armocost, place three, Jeffrey Snyder, and place four, Kimberly Meizmer.
And you got a second? In seconds. And Sonya, you're good?
Yes.
Sonya says yes, we passes three oh. Very good. I will certify that, Daddy. That's five B. Now we're on to five C, Cap Cod Representative. We are a member of Cap Cod, we are, uh, due to pay a member and it is time to go. Uh, because Mary was our representative, we need to select another one. Does it use of this person, uh, is, is, can be a vote member of the General Assembly, the meeting's term, I think, it may occur quarterly, but I know we do at least annually, but the annual meeting was on ninety-nine, so whoever's on here is gonna get out all of that.
Can you say that?
What's that?
Can you just repeat the last thing you said?
Uh, I said, I don't know exactly what, how often the meetings are. They may be quarterly, they are for sure at least once a year, but the annual meeting just occurred on September ninth, so we were, we're on the right time. So new, whoever's, whoever is the, our representative will have to go find out when the next set of meetings are. It may be a year or so. So.
Uh, are the meetings usually in a different place all the time or is it in the same place?
Uh, no, they're in a different place, I assume, but it's not all over Texas. Cap Cod stands for the, um,
Capital Area.
Capital Area thing, so it's probably in and around Austin. Uh, so, does anybody wanna do this?
Um, yeah.
Sonya says she cannot do this. One of the other two wanna do this?
By default, I will, but if anybody else would like an opportunity, I'd like to give that opportunity.
Alright, I'll take it.
Alright, somebody make a motion that Jan be it.
Motion that we accept Jan Falcone, Cap Falcone Representative for the city of Martin Dale.
Alright, and Lisa, you're gonna have a second.
I'll second it.
And Jan has obviously agreed, so that passes three oh. Jan, you're, you're, yeah, we will, uh, there's a form to fill out, I will have it, um.
Put it in my mailbox, I'll come and sign it.
Yeah, 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 I'll have it down there. Alright, that's five C. Now on to five D. This is pothole repair. We are coming into the new fiscal year here in another couple of weeks and it is time to go, we have new road repair money. Uh, of course, our pothole repair process has been for the past year using uh, our chip seal, or big orange machine that comes out and fills them up. And we have some potholes we could go off and go through that with. Now, last year, because the price is about thirty, thirty-six hundred dollars a truckload, um, we need council approval to go off and spend that every time, and so if, we, we're not very nimble with being able to do that. So what I'm proposing is that we get pre-authorizations for up to six, I believe I have on here.
Six different potholes or six times you need to re- do some repairs?
We wanna be authorized for twenty-one thousand dollars to go off and do this six times uh, during the year.
Okay, I see.
So that we don't have to come ask Mother May I every time a pothole needs to go, you know, there's enough of them to go through.
We already budgeted the money and so to do it, we need to not wait, especially if weather is, is permitting, they need to jump on it. And so we need, we need, um, uh, the mayor's position and our administration to be able to pull the trigger on that.
Is that a motion?
Uh, it can be.
Sonya, Sonya moved that we do this.
I'll second it. Let's go.
I say yay.
And, yes, motion passes three oh. Thank y'all very much. And we have, we are, we are already lining him up to come out in October. Uh, the first, first one we're really gonna go hit hard is Skyview. They have been, I was over there today and they, they need it bad, so
Good.
They'll appreciate that. Alright, that brings us to five E, the river access at Skull Bridge. Now, this one is, uh, this is discussion only tonight, but, uh, this is discussion only tonight, but, uh, Sonya brought this up here a week ago, or not a week ago, several times in the past few months, uh, due to our heavy use of stuff going on down there. Uh, of course, what's created some issues is is that the parks have been closed and the other river access points in surrounding areas that pushed a lot of traffic here because it's a road and provides access to the river, people are using it heavily. Uh, it has been a safety issue. Back on in May, uh, we, we through the emergency uh, declaration, uh, were able to go off and put some special things in effect to reduce parking along the road easements, which we've done. Uh, and we've increased the patrols in the area, but it continues to have heavy use, and it continues to be a, an area that needs or that that people are trashing up. So I think that's, that paraphrases what your issue was. Is that not true?
Um, yeah, so I'm off like for responsible river usage, like my gripe is with, you know, as long as they're utilizing it. So my concern for that, you know, as a city, we have the, we had to follow the COVID guidelines. Well, I know that if sometimes whenever I pass through there, like COVID guidelines weren't being followed there. Yet we have our parks closed, and I understand that the city doesn't own that. But also it's the the amount of trash that's down there. It's just ridiculous. Like, we have to get a volunteer, you know, the eyes of the San Marcos River, thank goodness for them, that they picked up the trash. But people are not being responsible. Some people, some people may, but there's a lot of trash. It's it's trash down there, and that's what I'm concerned about.
Okay, so, so what we, you know, the, so the request for this agenda item was that we needed to talk about, you know, who owns it? Who really is responsible for all of this, and what can be done about it? So this other, the second, go to the next one, Jared. So, so this, this slide talks about what we do know. We do know that that little section, which is the parking area, that that arrow do, we don't own it, we're sure of. Uh, our easy access to who the ownership is is through the Caldwell County CAD records, and you can see that this image is copied out of their files, their maps. And that box that talks about property ID, the owner, they got the owner doubt is null, which means they, when I talk to them over there, they don't have a definitive ownership record of that. But it's small. Now, we do know, of course, that the Conrad folks own every piece of property around it on the side of the river. So there's not much question in my mind who, if we, if we ever did a title search and did all our homework to go off and get it, what it would show, but uh, the easy direct route that we have and have used on other areas doesn't lead us to that. Uh, the trash, of course, has been left there for is heightened, but it's been a problem for years, and it certainly has been a problem there. There was a trash can, a barrel, or something we put out there once upon a time. The city did before my time, and and it was never didn't, didn't seem to solve much of the problem. In fact, it actually, I think if you decided it made it worse, people would use that even as drive-bys and throw stuff in there, and before long it was fully overflowing. Uh, we know the city has, has increased use of the area, accessed the river as a temporary issue. Now, just, uh, y'all may have been keeping up, I'm probably telling you, students already know, but New Braunfels did open their river access parks last weekend theoretically, and haven't gone over there to see. San Marcos has has put out that they're opening theirs up tomorrow. So, uh, our plan all along was to, uh, after San Marcos got their parks open, we were going to go wait a week and then and then open up ours. So the temporary piece of this, I believe, is is definitely coming. I I think, I think that that another week from now, we'll, we'll have other avenues for people to use than there. Uh, the city has responsibility for safety on our roadways and up to the city limit. The city limit on Skull Road is at the riverbank on the Guadalupe side. So we're responsible for the roadways, uh, including that bridge, uh, in my view anyway, uh, up the hills and in in front of the parking lot. So go, go to the next slide, Jared, if you don't mind. What we first need to answer is, you know, what can we do about this? And the question is, is, you know, I get, you you've said something needs to be done, but you didn't say, you had a suggestion of what you want to do. I don't think we can shut, personally, I don't think we can shut down the parking on that property. Area that doesn't belong.
But if the, if it's not designated as pa- as parking, aren't there cars being parked illegally on the roadway? If it's not designated, it's not designated as a, as a kayak drop-off, it's not designated as parking for people utilizing the river. There's this parking there because they want to. There's no restrictions. There's no guidelines. I mean, I think the only restriction that I saw was a temporary yellow warning tape, which cars took that down anyway.
There's still been ticketing, if they parked in there, even after the tape's gone.
Yes, but I mean, like, the tape was on the ground. It was, it didn't even stay up. And then another thing that, you know, I was concerned about was, like, people taking the litter over there into the river, like, we have a, a can van in in place, you know, and it's like for litter and and debris, you know, taking it over there. So people are actively taking stuff to to the river. I mean, but, you know, I don't, I don't know about the enforcement. I don't know if anything can be done. I know that with the zero is being like listed as nobody's property. Well, I called over to the tax office today because I know that there are some zeros, and they're going to look into it, and they're going to see who the owner is. As far as the littering, if it's here in Martindale, and, um, where is the City of Martindale? I think we, we need to, we need to pick up the trash. I think we need to put the bill and pay for somebody to pick up the trash. I don't think that it's acceptable for the trash, for just that area to be trapped out the way it is.
So what I'm hearing you say is you want the city, city to hire somebody to pick up the trash?
Yes.
I have something I'd like to add.
Uh, just a second.
Yes.
Now, we've also had people, the Parks guys are are close to that. Of course, in our, in our parks, the Parks Commission has got some of their volunteers have volunteered to go do litter patrol in the parks, and they've been doing it probably for a year. They have also brought up in some of their meetings that that's that's getting old. They would like the city to come up with a mechanism to to get somebody to go, come, come do that, uh, on a more permanent basis. So Sonya's request is not just, I mean, it it could play in with with the parks, although this is that when we do this and say things like that, I don't want people to think that we think that's part of the park. That is not part of the park. That area is private, privately owned by someone.
But I think, like, as a city, we're being responsible for the way that our town looks and the amount of trash that's in there. Then, you know, we can't just leave it there. We can't just leave it there for cars to pass by every day and to think that that's how we're, that's acceptable in our community. If it's parking can't be enforced, if the amount of people cannot be enforced, if we cannot put trash cans there, then I think as a city, we need to hire somebody to clean it up.
I got, I got that part there. Now.
Is there, is there public or city-owned property that's near or butts that property?
The streets.
Just the road.
The street that's all the way around it.
Yeah, uh, I mean, what is that property zoned?
Oh, R one.
I believe it's R one. I'll find out. And as, as I feel, I feel like I'm, I'm on the same page as to where you may be going, and that is.
R one.
If it's listed on the tax rolls as null, which indicates that no one is paying taxes on it, what would it take, Kent, for the city to claim that property, begin to budget for its, um, cleanup with part of the rest of our cleanup, as well as, I don't know if anyone on the council currently remembers, it's probably been three or four years ago. There was a volunteer fire, uh, department individual who's a veteran who made mention to me that it liked to to speak to the city on behalf of veterans, that that would be a prime place that a, that a veteran memorial could be placed. And his thought process was that if the city were to, if the city owned the property, then the city could donate it to the veterans. And then in essence, they would maintain it. So that's a, that's a big ball, I understand. However, but to begin that, the first question is, if no one owns it, and we on the, and we on the streets all the way around it, we're, you know, talk me through that, Kent.
Well, yeah.
County property?
No, I guess here, here, here's my thought. If, if, if the question is how, if the problem is parking in litter, then what, what the city has is effectively two options at its, its disposal, which is there's, there's authority to en- enforce state law, which under three, chapter three sixty-five of the Health and Safety Code, it's illegal to litter. And people, people can be cited for littering. Um, and, and then the other thing is, I, I, again, I, I don't know what, what this looks like when people are parking en masse, um, if it is en masse, but you, you violating a zoning ordinance doesn't, um, doesn't necessarily strictly apply to the owner of the property. And so if, if the city has a desire to say, listen, we, we think that what these people are doing is effectively tantamount to violating zoning ordinance and parking all of these cars on the, on this property solely for the purpose of, of accessing adjoining property that's not consistent with this use. Um, I think the city, you know, the city could, um, you know, post, post sign if it wants, pointing out problems with littering, uh, and then, you know, could also let people know that, um, using, using properties, a parking lot, isn't consistent with, is consistent with the zoning classification of the property.
But, uh, okay, that's the, that's a different take on it than what I was taking about. Well, we, we, we need to go look. Uh, it's zone R one, and our some, uh, there are, R one doesn't mean just residential. If you look at the table, there's, there's some public use stuff listed in there. Uh, I don't remember what they all are, so we'll go look at that. That's a good idea.
And, and I, I want you, I was also looking at the city's ordinance on, um, what constitutes a public nuisance. I mean, I don't it, it's arguable, but I, the, I mean, it the problem is we're not dealing with a landowner who's a bad actor.
Right.
Problem is, we don't really know who owns this, and maybe not. I mean, I, I can't, I can't say that definitively because I haven't looked at it, but, uh, I mean, we can look and see if something can be done to, to prevent people from doing things that are I think inconsistent with Martindale's code of ordinances and state law.
If we could have it donated to the city, and then we put parking meters on it, and that, those parking meters pay for the maintenance of that space.
That's where, that's where I was going.
Jared, you call up Mr. Noel and see if you can get that done.
All right. Is that who owns it?
The problem is, we don't, we don't.
Rob? Rob, could I, could I interject just for a moment? It's Kim.
Yeah.
Uh, so I did actually call on this property a couple of years ago, and I called Mr. Conrad, who I believed at the time owned it, and he told me that it was strictly a city easement, and then I also called the county about it, who, um, they were quite surprised that nobody was in fact paying taxes on it, and told me to acquire the property. We needed to do a survey. So if that helps at all.
Say that again, that they told you to go get a survey done on it?
Yes.
Yeah, well, that's, that's what we, of course, have talked about here is that the only proper, the proper way to figure out the owner is to go through a title search and do the survey and go do that whole thing, which is going to cost some money. That of course, you know, we're not, hadn't budgeted and hadn't planned on going off and going to do it. Now, we could probably fit it in, but we, but we could do that. But is that really what we want to go do for a problem that we think is going to go back to being what was the status quo here in the next few months?
Well, see, like, um, I, with, you know, with having some knowledge about the, the tax office, and then there, I know that right now they're trying to rectify their zeros in the system. So with me talking to Shannon today, they were going to be looking at this. I think just letting it go the way that it has been for years and years, not knowing who the owner is and what's going on. We're doing exactly the same thing that we've been doing for years and years and years. We want to progress, like, I think we need to find out who the owners are. If not, is that something that the county is going to acquire? Is that something that the city is going to acquire? Or do we just want to keep on being the way that we have been for years and years? Are we ready to, like, move on and, you know, if there's an issue that's come up, are we going to try to work together as a city to rectify it and grow as a city, like, try to fix it?
Well, that, that, that's all well and good, Sonya, but you said, there's only so much that can be done, uh, with the resources that we have. So what you're really saying is, is, uh, let's put this at the top of the priority list, and personally, I don't believe this belongs on the top of the priority.
I didn't say it's on the top of the priority list.
You don't believe it belongs to her?
Wait a second, let's finally finish. Say that.
See, so I said not at the top of the priority list because it's been on the agenda already for a couple of months. You know what I mean? So I waited patiently until it was, came on the agenda to discuss it. But I think, like, actively trying to seek solutions, if there's a bunch of trash there, let's clean it up. If it was cleaned up a week ago, and now there's trash there again this week, then we need to clean it up.
Okay, uh, somebody else out there in radio land had a comment. Lisa, you're raising your hand.
I did, I did, and so I, I completely agree, um, with what Sonya is talking about, but in, in regards to being progressive enough to, let's continue to move forward. I will say, Mayor, you made the comment about, you know, in a few weeks, we'll go back to status quo. Well, I will tell you, status quo is a junkyard trash mess that I'm not proud of. And so I would want to move off of center from that. If, in fact, Mr. Conrad indicates that that is an easement, then one or more of his surveys on the surrounding properties should indicate as such. And so if, in fact, they do not, and this particular property falls into what I feel certain will be a list that is being compiled of, of properties that need to have designated easements as per the city. So to me, this is one of those it's not, it's not true infrastructure in the sense that we're putting pipes in the ground, but it is, we are, we are truly identifying the ground that we actually own and do not own, so that we can do something with it. That area needs to be cleaned up, and I one hundred percent agree, and was going to suggest the same as Jared. We need to clean it up. We need to, uh, pave that area, just whenever that road gets paved, we need to pave that area and put up, you know, some not twenty-five cents a minute type of parking meters, whatever is, whatever is necessary, and begin to reclaim our money for it. Because people are going to continue to park their area, and quite frankly, those who And quite frankly, those who do, they'll pay whatever they have to, to not be totally.
Mayor?
Some, some.
And we should see a dramatic drop in the amount of people over there. What, if y'all been into San Marcos, driven around San Marcos, y'all probably seen what has completely devastated us with the amount of people there. Is San Marcos actually closed off their public ingress and egress at all river crossings? So the bridges, they fenced those off, you weren't allowed to access the river from the bridge. I don't know how they did it, I don't know if it's because it's within the city, you, everything's within the city. But the only place that wasn't fenced off was under I thirty-five, and that's because they couldn't. But every other access river point from a roadway was fenced off. So hopefully, by them opening up their river parks, by New Braunfels opening up their river parks, I, I do feel, based on the people that are coming out, and the people that we're finding in the parks and saying, hey, we're closed, and this and that, they're all coming from New Braunfels, and they're all coming from San Marcos because those parks are closed. So I'm, I'm hopeful, and I do think we should see a dramatic decrease in the amount of traffic over there.
How, how many of us can say that as long as we have lived here, that is a trash collecting area? Be it that that's the way the wind blows, or the fact that people think that they can just throw out their trash in that space? I've been here twenty-three, full of trash.
Like, there's, they're putting, uh, you know, mattresses and stuff out there. I don't see.
Yeah, I mean, we, we constantly.
There are mattresses.
Yeah, it's, it, there, I've seen furniture out there.
Yep.
That seemed to go away a, a while back when we took the trash can. We haven't seen that quite as vast since the trash can disappeared.
I mean, primarily before all of this happened.
Bring it back.
That was, that was more fishermen and kayakers than it was tubers and people just wanting to sit in the river. So the folks that, that are coming down there that are parking are not the folks that were there two years ago, three years ago. And two or three years ago, yes, they still left trash, but it has markedly increased now because it's a different type of people that are coming there.
Harry, with, with any, with the increase in people, have there been any tickets for littering or, or for the can ban?
No, ma'am.
Wait, what was that question?
The, the trash that you see up there at the parking area, people are leaving, they dump their trash, and unless we're right there watching them dump it.
The que- the question, you asked what the question was, the question was, how many tickets have we, have we issued for, for littering or for the can ban, uh, over the past year, uh, at, at that location? And the answer is zero. And the, the, the answer, of course, is, uh, why is it zero? Is because you gotta catch them in the act, and nobody's stupid enough to to throw stuff on the ground with, with a cop watching. Harry sat out there all day one day, I was
July fourth.
July fourth, ju- excited, watching that intersection, I mean, he was parked there the whole day, and, uh, the parking issues disappeared for the, while he was there, Jared, as soon as he leaves, it's back.
Yeah, I mean, Mayor, and I, I, I think this is the point that you're getting to, but the, the problem that, that the city has, I mean, there's clearly a problem identified. Um, but, but self, self-help is not necessarily a remedy that is available to a municipality, and, I mean, if we, we see a, a violation of either one state law or two, the, the city's zoning ordinance, it doesn't mean we can go and, and fix that ourselves. Uh, I mean, because normally the process is, you identify the property where the problem is, then you, you contact the landowner or owners to, to resolve that problem, and there's, there's an underlying process to address here, if in fact, that's what it is that the city wants to do, and that is determine what, what the ownership rights are on this property, and then decide where to go from there. But entering on property and altering it or changing it because we don't like what's happening is, is
And constant.
Well, where, 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 where do we? I'm sorry, I was just gonna say, where do we land when, when the property is no man's land?
Yeah, we have, we have to, we have to figure out who owns it, if, if we want to do something with it.
And is that the burden of the city or the burden of the property owner around it, who quote, used to own it?
Oh, yeah, I, 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 I understand, but i- if, if, if there is an unknown, simply because we don't know who owns it, it doesn't create a de facto right to enter and correct the, the perceived problem. Because the, the city's authority extends to enforcing its, its ordinances and enforcing Texas law. Um, we, we've got law enforcement that can do that, but simply because we can't identify the landowner or clearly point to a document and say, this is what established or shows, uh, shows rights in this property, doesn't mean that we can enter the property and do something with it, because ultimately, that is someone's. Uh, and then if it's not, then there's a different course of action to follow there.
And then does that fall on the burden of the county appraisal system? Because in all reality, they're not receiving taxes on something they should be.
Yeah, I mean, may, may, maybe that is the case, um, but whatever it is that the city does, it, it needs to act within the, the parameters that we have set forth, which is the law and the code of ordinances.
Well, and I think that's something that we definitely need to be guided through with your guidance, um, uh, in a way that we can legally and appropriately navigate in order to even begin to determine a resolution. In the end, we need to know how to get there properly.
I, I, I think so, and, and listen, I, I agree as much as anyone else, uh, you know.
Actually, we know that, right? I mean, Kim found it out when she went and investigated this, and the same answers what we've come up with there. If we want to, we can spend the money and the time for the city to go off and do a title search on that property, and I have no idea how much it'll cost, I do think it'll take some time, and, and force the issue to say, hey, this is, this is based on these documents, the actual owner of that, that little sliver of land. The question I have is, is a, as a, as a council, do you guys really want to go off and spend that kind of time and money and resources to go do this?
The county is actively trying to look for zeros, they're doing that right now.
So, so Sonia said.
And I've called, and it's been identified, Santa, and they're looking at it right now, they're trying to actively identify zeros.
So, so Sonia says somebody else is taking the time, there's the resources and the money to go try to answer that question. Maybe we just need the, the cooler jets for another few months, and let's go figure out, let them go do their thing.
I'm all for that. You know, we have the same problem down here at this o- other low water crossing, too.
Absolutely, there, there are, there are a number of zero identified properties within the city that I, we turned up and, and we scratch our heads saying, oh, what are we gonna do about this? And then they will
I don't know how.
Rob, is there something that we could do that official letter or request to the appraisal district that asks them that they correct this? Because on, on a, on a larger scale, if we have null, um, properties, we're not collecting the property tax that we should. And so at that point, is it their responsibility, is it their, to, to correct that deficiency, or is it the city's? I, I think it might be the appraisal district's responsibility to correct that deficiency.
I agree.
I believe, I believe it is, but they're running under the same restrictions that, that, that every business and, and city or government does. You still gotta prioritize what's most important, for instance, this thing is probably less than a tenth of an acre of, of agricultural land, uh, generates about ten cents a year, and, uh, if it was zoned at, at the title somebody, so it, it's not a, it hasn't been a a high priority for them, I'm sure, for, for that reason, but
Well, we do pay, uh, we pay them a general local agreement fee. We pay them about ten thousand dollars a year to manage our, our property appraisals. As, with that agreement, I, there might be some motivation that we could assist.
I, I agree, I feel like this is a, you know, the squeaky wheel gets to grease in the sense of, yeah, they got a whole lot of these problems, and we've got more than one in town, we've got more than five in town. But we need to, as council members and, um, city officials in whatever capacity, to make those phone calls to the appraisal district, to our county commissioner, to whomever, to say, you know what, let's get this done.
Well, you know, the, the other thing is, uh, having a title insurance or, you know, title company uh, jump on board and give her a, they, they normally at most charge only a few hundred bucks. Um, I know that the city doesn't necessarily want it to jump into spending unnecessary funds, but we're not, we're not talking, in my opinion, about a, a, you know, four-figure to five-figure venture. I think it's a matter of a few hundred dollars and they can take it out of the mayor's salary that he's been paid.
There you go.
Unless we have to go through a survey. Ken, I think that, I think the biggest cost concern is if, if surveys are required of the rental.
I, I agree that there is a concern of the cost of that, however, I also think that, and, and we've got some title companies that are, um, not necessarily Mo- Martindale residents, but people who own and, and work in title companies that are local folks, specifically in Lockhart, that may be willing to just for their hourly rate, wage, uh, rage of digging into and doing the title search part to see what they can find. I, I think that's, I think that's a very viable avenue. And then if we
I, I, I'll, I'll assume that, that what Kim said is correct, and, uh, you know, I think that's, I think that's excellent work on her part in getting that done. Um, but, you know, if this, in fact, is an easement in favor of the city, and the easement, um, is is broad in scope and not exceptionally limited, then that would really make things very easy in terms of allowing the city to, to place signage that could, that could easily resolve this issue.
There's already no parking signs there. I know, I noticed they got put up. I don't remember, uh, us talking about it in a meeting, though.
I do, I remember.
They, they were put up with the authorization of, of, when we closed the parks. We said, if we close the parks, it's gonna go down there, and we need to go control the, so it was May twenty-ninth when that happened. And we did it through a, the disaster declaration process. So the council didn't vote on it, but you certainly were, were informed of it, so.
Okay, I, I remember, I remember now.
Okay, so what I heard is, is that, that the council, at least two of you, have said, let's go think about the process of how we go hire cleanup people. And, uh, Jared, Jared will be glad to be able to go do that. And, uh, the other thing is, is I heard at least a couple people say, uh, the CAD folks are working on this particular issue right now. Give them a little more time and, and see what turns up out of that. And then the third thing is, if that doesn't turn up anything, then we go, go figure out what it's gonna cost to go, go get the ownership question answered on our own.
It would be just like a land, a land man, we, and there's some that
What's a land man? I don't know what to say.
A land man is, he's the one that goes and does the digging and the, the dirt and, you know, looking at the titles and all that, so there's some veteran in Lockhart, too. But, um, like I said, if, if we want to allow people to do the neighborly thing and park there and swim there and do whatever that they want to do at the river, then, you know, we just need to, I'm just more concerned about picking up the trash, and let's take somebody to pick up the trash and keep it clean.
Yeah. Okay, that was a fun discussion. So that brings us to, uh, the future items list, and we haven't changed any of that, uh, based off of last time. Anybody got any new, new stuff they want to stick on there, going once, going twice? Good deal. Uh, that brings us to adjournment. The next, next meeting will be the first Tuesday in October.
That's the
Tuesday in October, okay.
That's October sixth?
Whatever that is, uh.
It is October sixth.
Yes, October sixth.
Okay, good, see.
All right, thanks.
So do I have a motion to adjourn?
I make the motion.
My second.
And are you ready to leave, Lisa?
Yes.
Vote yes. All right, as I declare, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night, thank y'all.